All right, so welcome to the August meeting of the Village of Southampton Planning Commission. Welcoming everybody tonight. So we have our agenda here, we're just gonna follow the agenda. First step is the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. So we're gonna do a roll call. Or Tamina Gil-Martin? Eduardo? Eduardo is not here, not yet here. Bob?
Yeah.
Michael Anderson? Laura Devini?
Yes.
Okay, Christian Picco?
Present.
Okay, Michelangelo? No, Michelangelo, I think he's away. Summer Stelling? No, she's out. Oh, she's going off to school. So let me ask for a replacement, and myself, Mark Schiffer. So again, welcome to the Planning Commission meeting. So just would like to make a motion to approve the previous minutes of meeting.
Make a motion.
Make a motion. Seconded, everybody for it.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, very good. The fourth item that we have here on the agenda was a presentation and an update on the sewer, on the proposed sewer commission, but the Chair of that committee, Paul Travis, asked me to postpone it one more month, such that they could button up some of the aspects of the proposed project, including, you know, the location of the sewer street in plan. So we'll postpone this until September, and we hope we will get a presentation at that time. But tonight, we have a very special guest, Lynn Arthur, who is gonna talk to us about renewable energy in Long Island. Lynn is the local organizer for the Choice Community Power Program from the town of Southampton, and she will talk to us about some regulations that's coming forth, requiring all the municipalities in New York State to be part of this program that's been really written and overseen by NYSERDA. So without more due.
Thank you. Thank you for spending time on this topic tonight. Are we okay to talk from here? Excellent. And you're gonna switch to, I'm in presentation mode. Let's see. Yeah, let me just put it in a different, how about? How's that, is that working?
Oh, we have it over there.
I have, here is one copy. Then I have, I have.
You have it?
While she's working through that. Mark, you already have. One for you, Pam, and also Robert.
Yeah, I have, I have a copy, so here.
Thanks. Can I take it and click through it for you?
Yes. You wanna take the whole, yeah, so you need this.
Cool, trying to work it out.
So apologizing for those little technical difficulties, but.
Because I'm not sure.
You're in good hands.
You and me, we're gonna have to share, no, I just put this together recently. Okay, I'm going to backtrack just a little bit, because it's been a couple of years since I was here, talking about choice, community choice aggregation.
Can you see, are we on? Wait, wait one more minute. Yes.
What I can say, though, while we're waiting, is that we're very excited, because we've been working on this program for four years to try to launch it, but there've been many obstacles that have been thrown in our path. But fortunately, with the assistance of our CCA Administrator, who I'll explain who that is during the next few minutes, we've worked with Fred Thiel and with the Governor, and we've gotten some bills passed that kind of force the utilities' hand on this program. So we've gotten, you know, you could argue concessions, and we're very excited, because on August 11th, every month, the Public Service Commission meets on their huge agenda, and they issue orders or make decisions on various efforts. But we're expecting on August 11th a significant announcement to be made, which will allow us to launch the program that involves the North Sea Transfer Station, the solar array that's gonna get built there. So the timing of this meeting is really good.
So just to backtrack a bit, is that the program is really, the driving force behind the program is the generation of electricity, of power, locally. Because there is the grid, the amount of power that is lost in the grid is tremendous. And there's a real incentive to be able to produce and generate power locally.
Yes.
I mean, for example, when you produce your power on your own solar panels in your own house, there is very, very little loss. You know, it's really one of the most efficient ways to produce. So here, the idea is to be able to create areas where there's local generation that can then interconnect with the local grid, and then go straight to the consumers.
Okay, so, let's start with community choice aggregation. What is it, in a nutshell? Next page. So, what's really important to understand on a foundational level is that there's a regulatory environment, right? The state has a strategy, organization for energy, and they determine and evaluate the various policies. So they establish the policy, the Department of Public Service then issues the orders, which authorizes programs like this one that we're gonna discuss tonight. And then NYSERDA, everyone's familiar with NYSERDA? New York State Energy Research Development Authority? It's another state organization, they're the ones that get the funding to build programs that motivate municipalities to run programs. Like, remember a few years, about five years ago, Solarize? Remember Solarize was actually a nationwide program? Well, New York State, through NYSERDA, gave the town of Southampton $5,000, not a lot of money, but to do a marketing program to encourage homeowners to put solar on their houses. Now, there's a program called Clean Energy Communities, I'm sure that Michael may have talked about, Michelangelo might have talked to you about that, because he actually, at the town level, works on that program. And right now, NYSERDA is motivating municipalities, through grants, to run programs to encourage residents to do things like buy electric vehicles, invest in heat pumps, you know, electrify the home, things of that nature. Well, what's driving all of those decisions is this. It's called the Climate Leadership and Climate Protection Act. It was established two years ago. There's been a committee of people that have been meeting over the course of the last two years, and the idea is that over time, mandates are gonna come down to the municipalities. And we expect a glimpse of that in the fourth quarter of this year, but chances are, we're probably not gonna see a lot until next year, 2023. But all the municipalities are gonna have to meet those deadlines. So for example, by 2025, they're looking for six gigawatts of solar energy to be installed across all of New York State. By 2030, they want 70% of New York State's electricity to come from renewable energy sources. You know, so these are, so these are basically what's driving programs. Next page. And one of the programs that was started in 2016 was called Community Choice Aggregation, and CCA for short. There was a pilot that was organized in Westchester, where originally 15 municipalities got together in a consortium, and they basically issued a RFP, you know, a request for proposal for competitive bid from electric service companies. I'm trying to avoid acronyms, because this, you know, this field is loaded with acronyms. But you might have heard the term ESCO, which is Energy Service Company. So companies that are competitively selling electricity compete with each other to respond to this request of these 15 municipalities for the lowest price for electricity for a two-year period. And also, they wanted a price based on 100% renewable energy. So they went to RFP, and they had a number of competitors, and they basically got back, from each one, two prices. A low price for energy on a two-year fixed, you know, fixed contract, and also one that's 100% renewable energy. And they then signed, they ended up underbidding ConEd, because ConEd was the utility in that geography. And the other, there were two actually, two utilities, because it crossed two different utility lines. ConEd and, what's the other one? Well, I've forgotten it, but there's a second utility as well. NICEG, that's who it was. And they underbid them. So the municipality said, okay, let's do that contract, fix price, and they saved $15 million for 100 and, I think it was 15 million for 110,000 households and small businesses over a two-year period, in aggregate. And so, I had coincidentally gone to the meeting in 2016, where they were showcasing this wonderful experience. And I came back to Long Island and said, gee, how come we never heard of this on Long Island? Well, of course, because of, you know, the environment, we don't have a competitive environment on Long Island. But we started to pursue it, and, you know, and here we are today. So what CCA does in its original form, back in 2016, is it allows, so the Department of Public Service authorizes a municipality to issue a competitive bid, and to allow them to sign, everyone in the entire town, all residents and small businesses, to a contract with an ESCO, you know, an energy service company. That would be different from PSEG. What else do I wanna say about that? Oh, and it's on an opt-out basis. So as a homeowner, all of us, let's say we're in the municipality where that happens, all of us can opt out at any time at no charge. So there's no contract where you're committed. You know, you can opt out, you know, and then there's a whole process around administering that. So that was the original order in 2016. So fast forward, over the course of the last two years, I'm sorry, the last four years, we were trying in Southampton to get this program, bless you, get this program launched. But we encountered a number of obstacles. No surprise. But with the assistance of our elected officials, and also with the CCA Administrator, and also with Fred Thiel, we have made a lot of progress. Fred introduced two bills that eventually got signed by the Governor, first Governor Cuomo, then Governor Hojel. And, you know, so we're moving ahead. But in the meanwhile, the CCA program has expanded, and that's the main reason why I'm here tonight, is to share with you this very exciting news. So the program has been expanded, whereby we don't have to issue a competitive bid in order to have a program. What we can do instead is we can build projects. So for example, at the North Sea Transfer Station, you might have read about this big solar array that's gonna be built there. And that's called CDG, Community Distributed Generation. So let's go ahead, let me see what else anymore on this chart. So this chart that you see up on the screen, basically, those are all the programs that are running in New York State. So you can see that this is not new. There are at least 150 municipalities that are in active programs right now. Next. And in fact, I've gone over almost everything on this page. On the lower left-hand corner, the 2016, you know, there's the original order. And the new order is on the lower right side. On the lower right side, what you see is CCA CDG. So what that stands for is Community Choice Aggregation, which is the base program, and this enhancement called Community Distributed Generation, as Mark very appropriately defined for us at the beginning, local generation. It can be solar, it can be wind, it can be tidal, it could be pyrotechnics, you know, it could be burning of gas. You know, any renewable energy generation that can be injected into the grid is accepted. But it also can be a compressed natural gas fuel cell. Because compressed natural gas in a fuel cell, under the law, is considered a transitional resource, a transitional energy generation. So it's accepted, even though it's technically not renewable. So what the.
Yeah, I just wanna ask you a question. You talk about the landfill in North Sea, where they have a problem with the methane gas. Were they recapturing that methane gas to use that for fuel?
Wow, that's a great question. That's a great question. That's not, that has not been talked about, but I'll take that back and get back to you.
Okay.
I'm sure Tom Ute was there, looked into it, the engineer at the town.
Oh yeah, Tom.
Tom.
Yeah, Tom is on the team. There's a small team at the town level, includes Tom, and Janice, and Frank Sapon. And it's kind of led by Councilman Bouvier. And we meet with the CCA Administrator regularly, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about that project, yeah, in a second. So the way CDG works, and why we're so excited about it, is this. A developer, so in this case, let's use this example of the town of Southampton. So the town of Southampton has this large parcel of land, the landfill. And what they did was to issue this competitive bid and invited developers to make proposals to develop a project, according to the specifications. The CCA Administrator, in this case, the town oversaw the whole process, but the CCA Administrator, at no charge to the town, actually did all the work. Because they have templates of RFPs that they've done elsewhere in the state. Like I said, this program's been around for years, and they've been very active. So they wrote the RFP, they issued the RFP. We had, I think, at least five companies bid. And based on the criteria, a decision was made who the developer would win that bid. And that contract was awarded over a year ago. So once that, I'm gonna skip ahead, once that contract was awarded, the economics is the key thing that the town, obviously, one of the key things the town is interested in. In this case, so all the, all the capacity that that array will generate is basically comes to the CCA, to the program. But the way the developer gets paid is there's a tariff. Is that term familiar, tariff? Okay, so LIPA has a tariff for CDG, for Community Distributed Generation. And so there are certain set of terms and conditions under which they will, you know, take all that capacity and pay the developer monthly. So the way the CCA program works is 10% of whatever that developer gets paid for the capacity that they're generating on that, on that, from that solar array, comes to the CCA. And as you can see in that lower right-hand corner, 60% of the value then gets redistributed to the members of the CCA. So in this case, the village board would decide. So let's say that was your parcel, the village board would decide who gets that economic value. Now, that economic value is not given in a check, it comes as a PSEG bill credit. But it comes as a monthly bill credit for the length of the contract. So in this case, it's, we're talking about 20 to 25 years. Now, the amount of money that they get, though, is dependent upon the size of the project. So you wouldn't, let's say if you had $100,000 to distribute amongst, you know, whatever, 100,000 people, each of them to get a dollar, well gee, that's not very interesting. So the part that we haven't yet wrestled to the ground, because the project's not gonna go live for another year, so the town board has time to have this debate, which promises to be fun. But we'd like to see, you know, it be substantial. So you wanna give out, you know, a substantial amount of money to homeowners, so that it means something. So we're thinking about, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood at $250 to $500 a month, or 10% of their bill, you know, something in that neighborhood. But the town board, or in this case, the village board, would get to decide who gets, you know, that 60%. And that's just one project.
But in the case of the landfill, I think, is the town also leasing the land?
Yeah, the town, so there's a lease that is negotiated directly, and the RFP requested this. It's directly between the developer and the town, or in this case, the developer and the village. And you get that revenue direct. But you also get the other 40%. So the village could take 40% of that 10% against your PSEG bill. So you're getting a lease revenue on a parcel that you would, you possibly own. And you also get 40% of, or 4% of the value that the developer is making from LIPA every month, against your bills. And that's just one project. I mean, the idea, like in the case of Southampton Town, this one project accounts for about 8% of the total demand that the town, every month. Because we have all those numbers that we can share with you, because your numbers are baked in there. Like, we have, we know what the consumption of electricity is by zip code, because we got that from the utility. So what we need are another, you know, 10, 15 more projects. And so, right now, there's a, there's a project, I mean, a labor project, where members of the town staff are working with the CCA Administrator to look at the GIS map for the entire town. And we're looking at the, also, the PSEG interconnect map, to see where it's appropriate. Because you can't, just because you have a big piece of land, doesn't necessarily mean you can inject into the grid at that location. And plus, the interconnect also comes with a cost. But we have a project where we're looking at where these parcels, you know, could be, where these projects could be cited, where could you put solar, where could you put battery storage, where could you put a combination of both? And, and that's, you know, a piece of research that's going on right now.
But the CCA, right now, is only the town of Southampton, am I correct?
Yes.
So but it's, there would be a possibility that the CCA would be comprised of, let's say, the village of West Hampton Beach, Southampton Village, Quogue,
Yes.
North Haven.
West Hampton Dunes, Sagaponik, Sag Harbor, absolutely.
So how can we organize this?
Well, it's a great question. We've been waiting for this meeting to happen on August 11th. That's what we're waiting for. Because, you know, I can't speak for the town board, but, you know, I think it just makes sense that until you've actually got something concrete that you can offer, it doesn't make sense to go out and get everybody all excited if we can't deliver. So the reason, I mean, Mark and I have a relationship, and Michael is also on your committee, so it made sense to have this meeting, but we haven't had meetings like this yet. We've been waiting for August 11th, and the idea is, after August 11th, we'll start to have meetings with the other incorporated villages, for sure. But also, there are other towns that are interested. I've talked to, at various times, over the course of the last three years, Southhold and Shelter Island, Riverhead, you know, it's no secret, Riverhead's been trying for years to get a solar array on their landfill, but because the internet cost, interconnect cost was so tremendous that they discarded it, became, that the project didn't pencil. Well, now we've got, we've got a whole different opportunity. Plus, plus, there's federal money. So in the last couple of weeks, you know, this bill for, I forget what it's called. What is it called? The, it's, they just talked about it like yesterday. They haven't had a vote on it yet, but there's many millions of dollars that are built, it's billions, I don't wanna go that far, but thank you. There's many, there's a lot of money in a fund, and there's a specific intention written into the bill to enhance the grid. So the idea would be that, you know, should you join with Southampton, we're already working on that. I mean, we're working on identifying places where we could build projects. And the idea would be to go after that funding with LIPA and say, hey, let's make a joint application for that funding. Let's enhance the grid with whatever it needs to reduce the internet, interconnect cost, so that we can build solar and get this, all this economic benefit. Plus, you know, it's no secret, as you said, there's losses on the, in the grid, but we're in a load pocket. I mean, meaning, we have one line that comes across the canal with electricity that goes all the way out. And because of the density in all, in all the building, I mean, the demand is tremendous. So, you know, it's supply and demand with the grid. And I don't know about you, but I've had blackouts already this summer. So building generation here is very valuable. And you'd think that LIPA would be very excited to, you know, solve that problem without building more transmission lines. You know, so it seems to me that it's a great opportunity. The program is there, the funding is there, you know, again, it's not easy. I'm making it sound easy, it's not. But all, all the ducks are lining up for the first time, so that's.
Certainly, I think you, you know, the desire, I can speak to everybody, there's a desire for the village to be definitely be part of it. And, you know, so we're gonna wait until this August 11th, until you.
Yeah, August 11th.
It becomes the, you know, an actual state program. And then, you know, we will help you to get together with all the villagers and then see where you guys can participate.
Next chart?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Does this have anything to do with the New York City project?
No. No.
Completely different.
Completely different, yeah. We, yeah, next one? Oh, it's, okay. Oh, good, cool, cool. Yeah, that, that wind farm is, that's a LIPA project?
It is.
Yeah, it's a LIPA project. So that's called the South Fork Wind Farm, it's owned by LIPA. All the other wind farms, though, are NYSERDA-based, because the cost of offshore wind to do a project is just exorbitant. So, the way in which, if you, you know, should decide to move forward, you have a lot of options. You can run your own program, you can talk to the CCA Administrator directly on your own, you can issue an RFP. Or, because of Fred Thiel, Assemblyman Thiel also brought forward other legislation that you may or may not know about it a few years ago, where you can piggyback on an RFP that another municipality has already issued. So in that case, you know, Southampton's kind of done a lot of the heavy lifting here. So what you, you know, might do is talk with your board about this potential and offer it up to, I mean, mayor, your mayor has already adopted the basic legislation, you've already got it in place. For you, the next step would be to either issue an RFP for a CCA Administrator and hire your own, or we can arrange a meeting, perhaps, you know, with the Deputy Supervisor of Southampton Town, and he could discuss with you, you know, what it would mean to be part of the Southampton Consortium. I mean, you'd still have your own program, as much independent. I mean, you'd still have your own program, as much independence as you want, but you'd have the benefit of, you know, the shared.
One possibility would be that, you know, a member of the planning commission could be the acting representative on the CCA for the village.
Yeah, and I would highly recommend that. The, the knowledge that you gain, it, it's, it's just tremendous.
All right.
And it's, there's no risk because the town can back out at any time. There's no cost, and, and that's it.
Thank you very much for this great presentation.
Does the state issue the, still, does the state still have the program that individual homeowners putting in? Because I did solar panels in my house several years ago, and the state had it in its center, and the federal government gave it in its center. I'm doing it right now in Florida, my house down there.
Wow, yeah, we do. In fact, I wasn't planning to talk about this tonight, but I'm a subcontractor to the town. I have a not-for-profit company called Peak Power, and we just are in the process right now of launching Sustainable Southampton NY dot O R G. So solar, there's, it's solar, battery storage, we're adding electric vehicles, the heat pump program, geothermal is there, demand response we're adding. So, yes, the answer to your question is yes, the incentives are not as good as they were, but they're still there. So for example, when you bought your panels, I think you probably got a 30% federal tax credit?
Yeah.
Yeah, me too. Now it's 26. There was also a state utility rebate that doesn't exist anymore, but.
The state gave you something too at the same time.
Yeah, the.
In the case of the solar panels, you know, you have, the, the house and the roofs have to be properly cycled, you know, unless you have a proper location and you have great solar exposure, it's not in the world.
They had to survey the city, there's many trees and stuff like that, figure the best location. They give the example, I had one roof for 14, 16, and $25.
Yeah, there you go.
Now we're gonna be adding on, so it's expected to be 100.
Well, and the, the other thing, so I do these presentations just for solar, educate people. The thing that people don't know is that if you, like, trim your trees, or if you put on a new roof that you put solar on top of, as long as it's within the same calendar year, you can deduct that off your federal income tax. I mean, there's a, any kind of solar prep, I mean, you have to talk to your accountant, of course, but.
Okay. I have another question. We used to get a lot of snow down here at one time. We don't get that snow anymore. So if you get snow on these solar panels, especially if you have a solar farm, that means somebody's got to go out there and clear those panels off, or not, do they have heaters in them?
No, well, the panels are at an angle, so they're ballasted because you can't, you know, you can't penetrate the cap on the, on the landfill, so it's, you know, there's a steel structure, and they're, they're at an angle and they're, and it's, and it's ballasted, so, you know, unless you've got a couple of feet of snow, usually soon thereafter, it just melts and.
I just wondered what they do upstate New York where they get a lot of snow. I mean, here, we don't get that snow anymore.
Yeah, last year was pretty, we had our share of snow last year.
I wasn't here.
Oh, you weren't here, no.
I was a farmer.
Last year, we definitely had a share of it. Okay, so moving right along, thank you so, so much, and really, very nice presentation. Look forward to continue the discussion.
Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda, I think, is Alex with us?
Yeah.
Alex is with us, okay, fantastic. So, the, I think the master plan was basically completed. I have a copy here of the master plan, and it hasn't been yet adopted fully, it has not yet been adopted by, by the village. I think the expected, if I, I think it's on August 23rd, the Board of Trustees are going to look into it and then to possibly adopt it at that time. So I'd like to encourage everybody to, to look into it and see what, which points should be emphasized, which points should be reviewed, if any. Christian has had a look into it, Christian?
Yes, I have.
And what, what is your take on this?
Oh, well, I think they certainly did a great work with it. Look, I, I, I forget, on page 77, particularly where it concerns the tree task force, I saw what they inserted in there, particularly some of the recommendation concerning private. That's not something that I think is immediately a priority for the community, but that's something we should tackle starting next year. You know, we decided to start with public and then to tackle private. They have specific recommendations, I remember, I think on page 77, but there's a lot in I would be keen to hear from the, once adopted by the Board of Trustees, to direct the planning commission, to figure out what their priorities are out of this planning, master plan in terms of what the commission can assist with. There is just a ton of it. They have to prioritize it for us to ferret through this.
And also, which, which regulation do you think should be written or rewritten to, to really make sure that this master plan is enforced, is, becomes a, a real, becomes real and applied in reality? So, we will, I will circulate, for those who haven't had yet, the, the link. Well, so, we'll circulate the link to everybody, and we're encouraging also, I think it's on the, it's on the village website, we're also encouraging the public to take a look at it and definitely attend right now what is scheduled on 8/23, a public hearing on this comprehensive plan. I mean, this date should be checked with, on the village website, whether it's going to, still going to be scheduled for that time. Does, as, does Alex wants to add anything on that?
Sure, I'll just add that the 23rd is going to be a public hearing, so the trustees are going to listen to any public input, so if anyone on, they're in the public that's listening, or anyone on the commission has any input, they can submit it either in writing to the village clerk or presented at that hearing. At a later date, there'll be a final version that will be adopted by the trustees, so that, I don't expect the plan will be adopted on the 23rd, but that will be an opportunity for everyone to be heard and provide their input.
And what is your sense as to the amount of regulations that need to be rewritten or modified from the, on the village code to make sure that this comprehensive plan becomes, you know, gets applied?
It's probably pretty extensive. If you've seen the plan, you know that there's several pages of recommendations. As you know, the plan, it does not change the village code, it's not a law, it's just a guiding document. So for each of the recommendations, there would possibly have to be code changes to follow that would implement those, those regulations. So there'll be a lot of probably opportunities after the plan's adoption to rewrite sections of code. Each of those would require its own public hearing, so there'll be continued opportunity for public input along the way. But we expect that there'll be, hopefully, several code changes and amendments that come out of this plan.
Yeah, and maybe also add in the, in terms of the policies and procedures of the board, that when applications come in front of the board, that there is some certification or review that shows that it had, that whatever application is, is made, has been reviewed in conjunction with the comprehensive plan, that, okay, very, very good. Great, so we look forward, and I encourage again everybody to, to participate in that process. There's a lot of great work that was done over the last couple of years, and led by Bill Manger in that effort. On the next point that we have on the agenda, unless there's any other, somebody wants to add anything else, Laura or... Okay, so moving right along, so the next point was on the RFP for the architectural and review historical structure. Alex, can you brief us a little bit on that?
Sure, so the trustees approved the contract that was sent over by the consultant that the Board of Architectural and Historic Preservation recommended, so I understand that's waiting on the mayor's desk for signature, or it may have been signed already. So our next step is going to be sending that contract back to the consultant, and probably very soon, sometime this month, I expect, we'll have a kickoff meeting with that consultant and the architecture review board, and we'll start beginning that, that work, which will have to be completed, I believe, by, by next September, in, in order to qualify for the, the state grant funding that we've, that we've won.
I, I think it's a very important endeavor to make sure that we have proper historical preservation in the village. Any other comments on that? Okay, new comments? The, the next item that we have here on the agenda, I'm not sure whether Alex had a chance to review it, whether, is the village going to start accepting contractors with the licenses from the, the town?
I saw that it was on the trustees' agenda, and they scheduled a public hearing on that matter for next Thursday, so I believe on the 11th that there's going to be a public hearing by the trustees to discuss that issue.
Okay, very good. I understand that for the landscaping, is it going to be only addressed for the landscaping portion, or also for the, the general contracting portion?
I believe it's, it's all home improvement.
Okay, for all the other parts, okay, great. I think it's, it would behoove the, the village to accept the town licenses such that if there is a dispute, it gets resolved right here at the town, you don't have to necessarily go to the county to resolve it.
I just wanted a question to know is, when I was in business, which my son has my business now, he has a town license that has Suffolk County license, so they would be approved with the village, he wouldn't have to get a third license.
Right, right, exactly, exactly, exactly. The idea is that right now, the village requires a Suffolk County license to get the permits and not a town license, and we would like to propose that the village now also accepts the town license, you know, in addition to the Suffolk County license. It's either or.
Well, we're talking about landscapers, I, I was thinking about the recommendation that landscape trailers have to back in the driveways now, not park out in the streets because they've become quite a traffic hazard now. I think all of us have seen that.
Right, yeah, that, well, that's a different topic, that's, that's in terms of traffic, yeah, absolutely, but not everybody has the, the space in their driveways to accommodate.
Well, this, this is the trouble with the village, the villages allow them to reduce their parking spaces down to only three, or sometimes two, and that should have never been allowed to happen because what's happening, if you go up on Holsey Street, for example, there's one house on the corner of White Street and Holsey Street, they must have five or six cars parked out in the street.
Right, well, that's another discussion, I, I hear you, absolutely. And Alex, any other proposed updates in terms of regulations that you know about or that you would like to share with us?
Um, there's also going to be a public hearing on the 11th, there's a code change that involves the height of retaining walls. It's really just a clarification of an existing law explaining what's included and what's not included in those regulations.
I think one, one regulation that might, could be reviewed also is the process for demolition and the demolition application, I think that, I mean, the village could maybe enhance that, that section of the code.
Yep, that's actually one of the recommendations in the comprehensive plan. There's a recommendation that demolition permits be required to show what's being proposed in its place, so that's one thing that's being considered. There's also an existing procedure that could be strengthened that requires demolition on buildings past a certain age, have to go through a review to determine whether or not they could qualify for landmark protection. So that's a procedure that is in place. I, I think it's like a 75-year look back.
All right. One question, what is the fine if they tear a historic building or if they tear a building down without getting a demolition threat? What is a fine now?
I'm not sure.
When I was, when I was on a board, it was $800. I want to know what you're proposing for a fine now?
Yeah, and that's the crux of the matter.
I mean, $800 is the drop in the bucket for these guys to tear a building down. I made a suggestion, a two-year moratorium, they can't touch the property and they have to reapply all over again.
Definitely some, I think the penalties and the fines, something that Alex should really definitely review, is that.
I'm not sure what the fine would be, that's something I'd have to look into.
Yeah, that'd be great, that'd be great, thanks. Okay, and the, so, anything else, any other comment on this point? No, all right, so, thanks a lot, Alex, appreciate the good work. We, so moving right along, our next item on the agenda was the recent efforts on some task force. I'd like to maybe, you know, table this to the next meeting, I know that there's, on the acquisition side, there's some sites that were, have been identified, and we need to still set up meetings with the trust, with the proper trustee to meet with the, the property owners, so we'll, we'll report definitely at the next meeting. And I think in terms of the mobility, I think that, that little electric car that, that is operating by circuit, the app circuit, is, I, I've used it, it's really a very, very nice feature, to be able to use that little electric car within the village to go to the beach, to go to the, uh, town center, brings it back to your house, to the, to the train station, I think it's a very, very nice feature, the app works really well and seems to be a very well-run. Okay, on the next. Yes?
Can I just update the commission on what we're doing for, with the tree task force for you?
Sure, sure, thank you.
So, very quickly, Alex has been working on a first draft of the Code 107 revision, which he has shared with me this afternoon, and I forwarded just now to the rest of the members of the tree task forces. Mrs. Davini and, and Mr. Anderson have it now in their inbox to look at the planning for this, is to have a final document that we like and agree on, deliver it by the 30th of September. We'll have a public hearing on the 13th of October for this proposed change. Presumably, the public hearing will stay open until the next November 10th date, taking input from the public, and then hopefully by November 10th, we'll have a resolution to adopt the revised Code 107. From there, from November 10th and before year end, we will be able to work on the Tree City USA application, deadline of which is December 31st, and so that is the last piece that we need for this Tree City application.
That's a great, well, she's great, it looks like we're right on target, we're right on schedule, and if we're able to do it for this year to be part of a Tree City USA, it'll be very nice. I mean, we should then plan, where, where should we put the signs? There's all the villages that are part of the Tree City USA, you see signs everywhere that it, we are Tree City USA, members of that community. Very nice, okay, thank you very much, Christian, about this.
Would you like an update on the seniors?
Yes, please.
Laura and I spent a lot of time meeting with a lot of people because I guess once we started asking questions, what we didn't find out immediately, we found out a great deal, um, the library has a lot of programs for seeing, just for seniors, and a lot of programs that seniors are interested in, and, and they sometimes serve them lunch and, and stuff, so there's, there's a place there that they can go. The library's also always interested in dealing with somebody else who has a program. They'll let them use the facilities. The library is also always interested in dealing with somebody else who has a program. They'll let them use the facilities. Um, the historical museum, that's a couple of things, um, a year. And also including a little tea or lunch or something. And St. John's, Father Patrick Edwards is just dying to get something going there that, you know, for seniors. They do have a knitting club right now, uh, but he's looking for anything that he can do. And, you know, happy to serve the food. Um, so there's, there's three buildings that are all accessible, easily accessible. And of course, there's the veterans hall. Um, Southampton Center, town center, which is located in Hampton Bays and there's one in Bridgehampton. It's amazing. Laura and I spent a couple hours over there last week. And there's really virtually nothing they won't try to do for a senior if, if they want it, if they get in touch with them. Um, the, yeah, sometimes you have to give them notice that you need to go to the doctor, you know, you need to use two weeks' notice. They can try to get in their schedule. If you want to go to a function at the library, give them notice. They'll try to get you, you know, a ride. They, they deliver meals all the time. Um, they're a great, uh, great source. One thing, it seems that the people who live in the Southampton Village aren't crazy about going to Hampton Bays or Bridgehampton. They want a, a senior center here. And that, a particular senior center is not happening. The town is not going to do that here.
The village?
In this village. Um.
Well, I think that the veterans hall does.
Well.
Has, has, is so perfect for it.
But the town, I'm talking about a town center.
Oh, town center, no, no.
Okay. See, there's one in Hampton Bays. There's one in Bridgehampton. And anyone in Southampton Village or towns, go to any of them. They're all open for them. They don't want to do that. They don't want to go there. And that, that's a, a lot understandable. They, they don't want to go outside of what they're, what they're familiar with. Um, but they'll, if you call, actually it's Bridgehampton, one that Southampton Village is most affiliated to, they'll come pick you up. You know, they, they do a lot of things that I think a lot of people don't know about. Um, and we were reading about, um, last week's press where, um, Trustee Brown and her assistant plan on doing things, among a whole lot of other stuff, but doing things through, they called season citizens. Because a lot of people don't like to be referred to as senior citizens. Yeah, me, I'm just an old person. Yeah, it's perfectly fine with me. But, um, um, but I think this is where the village of Southampton can really help our seniors is, uh, on the website, there's a section there for the, um, for seniors, seniors slash youth. If somebody develops that website to write down everything that goes on in this area, in this village, for the seniors, so that they can easily access it. If they explain on this website what the town center can do, not just refer them to another website, which the older we get, the harder doing things like that is. Um.
I think that's a great, that's a great, great suggestion. But I think that one element is that the veterans hall is really somewhat underutilized. And I think that it would be a perfect opportunity for us in the next couple of years or three, to plan something for it. But that the, our community, our village community can then maybe utilize it more, whether it's a youth center, whether there's other activities that are somewhat independent. Because I think the library has its own mission. And the library is open to everybody. And here it could be something for the village residents. And it is a village-owned building. It's a village-owned, we're managing it. It costs a lot of money for the, to the village to operate it. And I think that it's, if we could find a use for it, that, uh, helps the village residents. I think that, that would be a good, great goal.
I think it'd be great. You'd need to hire someone to run a program. I mean, this isn't, it doesn't just happen.
Right, you're right. Our center, the cultural center, right next to it, there is, uh, I mean, something could be worked out, um, with maybe the cultural center. I mean, I think it's, uh, because it's really, that veterans hall is really a nice building.
Oh, I know it is.
It's really nice.
Anything, anything like that, anything like that. You, you have, the village has a senior youth committee that came into being rather abruptly after it was not in being in October. And there's one person listed as the chairman of that committee, where heretofore in other committees in past years, there was quite a selection of, of village people that were on that committee. But now there's only one. And she's a little elderly. The point that I think that Pam is making and that we have discovered is that any program to utilize the veterans hall or any other village property will have to be instituted and run from the village administration.
Yes.
Not, not from the planning commission.
No, I understand.
It would have to be approved by the trustees to run it and pick people to run it.
Right. And, and I think we should, yes, no, I, I understand. But it should be something that we should definitely look into. Maybe make a proposal to the board of trustees that, you know, either we need to hire somebody or have somebody else in the village within the staff can take all that responsibility.
We can't ask, we cannot ask the one person that's on this committee. She really doesn't want to be, um,
Right, right.
She's not a village employee either.
No, no, we should create a, a real committee.
No, actually, Trustee Brown is supposed to be in charge of these activities. Maybe Trustee Brown and her assistant should take this under advisement and develop something for the village. No?
Yes. And it, and it could be a part-time person, to be a part-time position. Doesn't have to be necessarily.
See, what, what, we would love to see a full program run by the village.
Yes.
No question.
Yes.
Our, what we're saying here is, at least before, at least up and until something like that can happen and you, if you supply the older people in the village with the knowledge of knowing what is, is at least available now.
Yes.
And, you know, and somebody, once somebody creates this website, uh, and then the museum, the library, Father Patrick, they can all let them know, you know, what's the schedules developed. It won't be a huge job. I mean, because, uh, the list, uh, the list that, um, Trustee Brown had of things that she was going to do, uh, would give me a nightmare. I mean, it was a lot of stuff. Uh, but I'm just trying to reach, or we are just trying to reach the people to let them know what is available for them now.
Yes.
And hopefully that, that gets the more interested. And the more interest is shown, the, the, the easier it is to get programs started, to get them to come. Um.
And I would like to take this opportunity to, for anybody listening to this program, to if they want to get involved in that particular aspect or that particular endeavor, you know, everybody would be welcome to be part of it. So this is definitely something that we all agree on, that we need to look on, to look at, because your veterans hall in the next few years won't be too many veterans, you know? No question about it.
There were other wars besides the war.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. That's true, unfortunately, unfortunately, yes. You're right. You're right. Okay, so, uh, any other updates anywhere? I don't think so. Any, any public comments? Unfortunately, we don't have that many public at this session. So.
Mark, I'd like to mention something that, uh, with the state with left-hand turning arrows.
Yes.
They don't seem to want to put up. There's a phone number called New York State Department of Transportation Inform, a number is six three one nine oh four three oh five oh. They're the ones you call that complain about not having left-hand turning arrows on these lights. Because out here trying to make a left-hand turn, especially if you try to go McGee Street, it's suicide.
But I think it just, I think that the, the left-turning arrow at Main Street.
Yeah, that's just one.
Right.
You, you go through any place in the village and it, and it's tough to make a left-hand turn. And then it's worse on County Road Thirty-Nine. Now, I tried to turn down north, I was going east and tried to turn down North Main Street.
Right.
And I had to wait for a second light change and then sneak between the two tractor trailers to get, make my turn.
And you're right. But on the other side, the left-turning arrows, sometimes they are like somewhat misleading that somebody looks, sees green and then you just go straight.
They have, in Florida, they have left-hand turning arrows at every single intersection.
They are larger intersections. Here, you could have an accident. There's the people.
County Road, County Road Thirty-Nine has a turning lane in the center. And they don't have a left-hand turning arrow.
Right.
Yet they have it at David Weiss Lane only in one direction. If you look David Weiss Lane heading north, they should have a left-hand turning. They don't. Or they have one heading west to go into. They don't have, they should have left-hand turning all sides.
Yeah, well, it's something that we should definitely discuss more and appreciate your comments.
I spoke to the, to the chief police and she basically told me she had a, you know, she couldn't get the first base with the county.
All right. So, well, good comment. All right, good, uh, so I think that we'll adjourn. Our next scheduled meeting is, uh, September first. Is the next, the trustees is on the eighth. So our next meeting will be on September first. So I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion.
Second, everybody, hang favor.
Aye.